Good evening, I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Euclid Board of Education. Today is January 28th and we are meeting at the Fordice Building. If you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll please.
This is DeAngelus.
Here.
Mrs. Lysick.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Soudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hool.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take any public comments relative to the printed agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on then to some presentations and we'll turn it over to Mr. Bell, our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to welcome Charten Hills Elementary School tonight to do one of our two presentations and to introduce the team and to give us a little context to the presentation. I'm going to call Assistant Superintendent John Swisher to the microphone to introduce the team.
Thank you, Mr. Bell, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Bell and Mr. Vasek sitting there. I am proud this evening to be able to introduce Chris Paporis, Principal of Charten Hills Elementary School, who is here this evening to present the school improvement update for Charten Hills. Chris will be introducing his staff that is with him that helped and he will be concentrating, they will be concentrating on our district and building goals and where we stand at this particular point. Chris?
Madam President and members of the board, Superintendent Bell, I'm Chris Paporis, Principal at Charten Hills, and I will present on behalf of Charten Hills Magnet School. Presenting with me tonight is Jackie Stern, Assistant Principal, Kristen Gart, Math Coach, and Julia Dolce, another member of our team, is also present today. On the agenda will be an introduction of the school, our climate, academics and reading and math, and community school connections followed by conclusion and questions. Five hundred and fifty-seven students attend Charten Hills from all areas of Euclid. Our demographics are similar to the district as a whole. We have twenty-four general education classrooms in kindergartens, in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. The Gifted Program is a problem-based curriculum focusing on critical thinking, reasoning, to encourage leadership and responsibility to family, school, and the community. The Autism Program follows a highly structured visual environment to help all students enhance communication and reach independence. Our special needs services are done through our intervention specialists providing instruction to meet the goals of IEPs using both pull-out and push-in strategies. In a pull-out strategy, the student leaves the classroom to receive instruction and in a push-in strategy, the special education instructor joins the general ed classroom. Moving on to our building climate. We believe it is our responsibility to help students take ownership of their education through self-discipline and citizenship. The foundation to our climate approach is the responsive classroom. Sixty-eight percent of our staff has received formal training in responsive classroom. Our next part of the portion, our next part of climate will be Mrs. Stern to address positive behavior supports.
Good evening. Over the summer, we formed a BMT Committee, Building Management Team, and our focus was on proactive measures to create a positive learning environment for our students. One of these is Friday's Child, which is an alternative to Caught Being Good. Students' names are read over the PA. They receive a certificate written by their classroom teacher for why they received the award and a group picture is taken to be hung in our hallway. Our second initiative is Student of the Month. Photos and teacher-written highlights of the students are posted in our main lobby. Again, twenty-four names are announced over the PA and they receive Charten Hill prizes and a certificate. Mr. Paporis and I look forward to these monthly luncheons with these outstanding students. We're very grateful to Willoughby Chick-fil-A for providing these lunches. Character Counts is a nationally-known character education program. Each month, we focus on one of the six pillars of character building. Students are introduced to characteristics found in each of these pillars and then weekly thought-provoking questions are given in which students respond to in writing. The weekly winning essays are read over the PA and their essays are posted in our Character Counts hallway. To further showcase student achievement, quarterly academic awards assemblies will be held for students in grades three through five. From our first grading period, forty-five percent of our students in grades three through five received either all As or all As and Bs on their report cards. Finally, to keep student office discipline referrals low, our building management team decided to use Minor Incident Reports, or MIRs, as a pre-referral intervention. Forms such as these are used and endorsed by Positive Behavior Intervention Support Systems and they are meant to deter negative behaviors from reoccurring. Mr. Paporis?
The current chart in front of you is our office referral data. In red is the average of the other three buildings in the district. The blue represents Charten Hills. The first column refers to the total number of office referrals in the first semester. The second column indicated incidents indicates the number of referrals that resulted in a suspension. The column immediate to the right of that one is students that have been suspended, followed by the total days of instruction lost due to suspension. In summary, students develop self-discipline and citizenship. We use a combined approach to climate and our climate data supports a positive learning environment at Charten Hills. As we move through our agenda, the next topic is academic in reading and in mathematics. Our goal quite simply is to pass all sections of the OAA this coming spring. The AIMS Web benchmarking is a statistical snapshot of where our students fall nationally and gives us a probability of how they will do on the OAA. I think the board is familiar with the data represented in various triangles. Again, the red represents students at risk and are in need of intervention. The yellow is below target and statistically fifty percent of those students will pass the OAA. And green is above target and students are expected to pass that are in the green. Triangles that are similar in the fall and the winter demonstrate a growth rate that is similar to the national growth rate. We do have a second point of data that I will share with you tonight. Our school leadership team will dig deeper, in fact tomorrow, looking over these results. In kindergarten, we see better than national gains and a sharp reduction in at-risk students in letter "sound." In grade one, in our math computation, this does not necessarily mean we have regressed, but it clearly indicates that we did not keep pace with the expected growth. Once again, our school leadership team and our teacher-based team in the grade one will have to dig deeper into the reasons why. In grade two, we have similar to expected growth. In grade three, we have a slight dip in reading fluency but a slight increase in math computation. In grade four, the growth rate outpaced the expected growth in both math and in reading with large gains made in math. As we like to say, we grew the green and shrunk the red. And finally, in fifth grade, our progress is at the expected growth rate nationally. Statistically taking all of the green and adding half of the yellow will give a probability of where Charten Hills is if the OAA was given only January when we took the AIMS Web. We have the opportunity to still close the gap when the OAA is offered in the spring. Once again, we need a seventy-five percent passage rate to meet the state report card requirements. Again, the information I'm about to share is a statistical probability of taking all of the green and half of the yellow. In third grade, our numbers would be as indicated on the screen. In third grade, the OAA is actually offered in the fall and our results came back at sixty percent passage. The state fall average was sixty-five percent. Math is not offered in the fall. Our grade four probability would be as follows and our grade five probability based off AIMS Web would be as indicated. I feel it's important to mention at this point, at the start of the year, we were excited, yet it was challenging. We were unpacking, literally, getting to know each other as a staff, getting to know our building, understanding our students, as well as having a new administrative team. We also had a new focus and a new approach to our work. Again, we focus on teacher-based teams to assess data, to enhance instruction using the five-step process. In addition to core instruction, teachers provide enrichment and intervention. An emphasis is placed on frequent monitoring and finally, we have targeted tutoring support in place. As I mentioned, we use a teacher-based team approach because we feel the process is important. On this chart are the five steps in teacher-based teams, from collection of data to analyzing obstacles and strengths, down to what our strategies will be, goal-setting, and then analyzing what we did with our goals. In the first quarter, you can see our numbers, and then to the right is our second quarter. This was a teacher-based team self-assessment based on a three-point scale. We have made progress in every step and we feel we are proficient in this process, a process we feel important, that's important to our success. Our core instruction is another area of importance. It's language-rich, it's a balance between whole class and small group, it's engaging, which touches on the Marzano research and Bloom's taxonomy which we provided in the packet. And as I mentioned, we are committed to the collaborative process, the five-step process. Another part of our academics is daily forty-five-minute block of intervention and enrichment. During this period, it is set up so our gifted students, students receiving tutoring, as well as students in special needs, will get pull-out instruction. This will allow for a smaller student-teacher ratio so the classroom teacher can provide supplemental intervention and enrichment, again, in a small group setting. This is an example of some of our practices in small group. The point that I would like to make on this particular slide is grade four has done flexible grouping across the grade level where each teacher has taken a different responsibility. One is doing intervention math, another enrichment math, another intervention reading, and the fourth doing intervention, or excuse me, enrichment reading. Students actually move from classroom to classroom. If you refer back to the AIMS Web data, we have shown significant growth and our next step is to dig deeper on whether this is the result of this work. Again, the other classrooms are doing the flexible grouping within their classrooms, again, with a smaller student-teacher ratio. Our new critical questions is, what are we doing for the kids that get it the first time? What are we doing for the kids that don't get it? And how do we know what we are doing is in fact working? Core instruction and in the IE block does help answer some of the questions. Mrs. Gart will now present how we use data to help further explore these questions. She will address small group adjustments, baseline data, and a pilot program called Mastery Connect. Mrs. Gart?
Thank you, good evening. This is an example of kindergarten data collection sample. In the left-hand column, you'll see Common Core standards with the clinical tasks of each student. The middle column, you will find percentages of the classes of the students that mastered each task. In the right-hand column, you will see students that have not mastered the tasks and the teacher has, will use these students to form small group instruction. This is a, this is a daily collection tool that we use for grades three through five. This is organizational tool helps students, helps teachers adjust their instruction. Teachers input the letter of this answer for each student that each student chooses. The correct answer is in the heading, the correct answer is in the heading, the standard is at the top. This is used to compare students' growth from the fall, winter, and the spring. We use Mastery Connect to collect CFA data. Mastery Connect is an online common formative assessment tracking system to the Common Core State Standards in Reading and Mathematics. What is the purpose for Mastery Connect? It effectively assesses Common Core State Standards and monitor student performance, report student mastery, it creates, it allows teachers to create, share, and find common formative assessments. How does Mastery Connect relate to IE and Core Instruction? Teachers create flexible groups based on assessment data. Students receive timely, accurate intervention and enrichment. All, all students, students receive their test scores in real life, real time. Teachers simply take the scoring rubric, hold it up in front of the computer, and the testing is generated instantly. We use this data in TV teams, or teacher-based teams, which is TBT. This allows us to have increased time, focus on our data. Teachers are held accountable because they're prepared to bring their data to collaboration and this allows us to focus on strategies for student success. This is an example of individual students' performance. On the left-hand side, you'll see standards that were assessed. And on the top, on the top, students' assessments one through four, or one, sorry, one through seven. The green measures students that have, that have mastered the skill, yellow that they have nearly mastered the skill, and red that have not mastered the skill. This is an up-to-date look at a class and the mastery of each standard. This is in real time, up-to-date. Finally, looking at the grade as a whole, this allows teachers to share strategies on how they found success in their classrooms. Mr. Paporis?
The last part of our academic program is our tutoring support. Students are selected for tutoring based on AIMS Web scores. Since our goal is to have these students close the gap between their scores and the scores of their peers, the target reflected in this graph is twice the expected growth of the general student population. Once again, the goal is to close the achievement gap. The red indicates students that are below the target of twice the expected growth. The yellow indicates students that are on target, which means they are growing at twice the expected growth. And green indicates that students are exceeding the target of twice the expected growth. We have, our first data entry point was October 26th and the most recent was in December. We have other results in math. Once again, the red indicates students' growth that is below the target, again, of twice the expected growth. The yellow, once again, indicates twice the expected growth, are on target for that. And finally, the green represents students that are exceeding the target of twice the expected growth. Of the twelve students in math, eight of them have closed the achievement gap entirely and have been released from the program. We are now expanding this program to sixteen students in the second semester. The other four will obviously remain with the program. Our academic summary, our goal is truly to pass all parts of the OAA this coming spring. Our focus again is on teacher-based teams, core instruction, as well as intervention enrichment, frequent updates, and tutoring support. We are driven by our critical questions. Moving on to school and community connections. Our PTA has been of great support this year. Our Student Council has worked with the Euclid Hunger Center for a food drive just before winter break. The Veterans of Foreign Wars raised the very first flag over Charten Hills and they also participate in our Veterans Day. We've also worked on fire safety, anti-bullying, as well as keeping healthy with the Cleveland Clinic. The school has also allowed counseling services to be contracted with parents through their health insurance provider to be done at Charten Hills. Currently, we have nine students that receive additional counseling throughout the course of the day. But again, that is between the parent and the counseling service. They use our school as a place to meet with a child. For the second semester, we have new programs. North Coast Tutoring is an after-school tutoring program in math and in reading, accepting thirty students. This will be every Tuesday and Thursday for three-hour sessions. Do the Math Tutoring, we found success during the day that we're now expanding it to after-school for an additional sixteen students, which will total forty-two in all receiving Do the Math. This will also be offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays for one-hour sessions. Upward Bound will do off-site tutoring twice a week for one hour. They will coordinate where that will take place with the parents. The Upward Bound program is a K to five program as well as Do the Math. North Coast is strictly three to five. Another initiative is Parenting Partners. Parents will receive training to facilitate other parents on building practical skills and contributing to their children's success. The Catch program will help promote physical activity, healthy food choices, and prevention of tobacco in school-aged children. That is done with the County Board of Health. Drama Smarts is an enrichment program that uses drama to enhance reading, writing, and speaking skills through drama. And finally, Literacy Night will take place on February 12th. This is for students that are receiving tutoring support in the school. They will help parents learn what is happening in the tutoring support as well as what they can do to help at home. In conclusion, at five hundred and fifty-seven students, we are the second-largest elementary school in the district. We feel we are set up for a strong second semester. We will continue with our combined approach to discipline, continue with teacher-based teams to improve core intervention and enrichment instruction, an emphasis on frequent updates, tutoring support, as well as our new supplemental programs, and of course, guided by our critical questions. Madam President and members of the board, Superintendent Bell, this concludes my remarks. Our team will now entertain questions.
Thank you. The board, first of all, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just want to just comment the team and Principal Paporis on just an outstanding presentation and use of data like that and really being able to give us a real good picture as to how the school is performing and what kinds of measures are in place to be able to ensure that our kids continue to make progress. So I appreciate the work of the team, appreciate the work of your team that you've had in the preparation for this presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have one?
Yeah, I have a couple, go ahead.
No, no.
I was really pleased to see the significant growth in the AIMS Web for the kindergarteners from fall to winter. My son's in the fifth grade at Charten Hills and he tells me that every other Friday, Mrs. Klosniak takes them down to the kindergarten wing to work with the kindergarteners. I'm wondering, is that having a positive effect? Do you think that maybe that interaction and their modeling behavior, their modeling how to be good students, and possibly also helping them tutoring? Great idea. Are any other classrooms or grade levels doing that with?
We also have children, also our gifted program is also working with our students, our autism program. So they're getting some experience working with those. We're very committed to the process, so those are the types of things that we want to explore with our school leadership team as well as our teacher-based teams. Whether that's the specific reason why something is taking place, we'll take a little bit deeper study.
Well, I think it's great. I would certainly encourage you to do more of that. I know at Forest Park at the middle school, my daughter works with the handicap unit there during her lunch period on Mondays and Fridays. She says as much as she gives to them, they give her so much back. So I really feel the same way too. So I just, I would just really encourage that and keep up the good work. I think that we're going to see significant gains and I'm just so excited about the kindergarteners starting off so well.
Mrs. Lysick, I know Lincoln that, so other school districts in the district had done it in the past.
Yeah, I would certainly encourage more of them, that's wonderful.
Graders would work with the kindergarteners pretty much.
And then just to, maybe just on the heels of that, the first grade, you showed that there was some slight decreases in the math computation in the first grade. If, if the targeted tutoring support is based on the AIMS Web score, would some of those kids, say, what is that, nineteen that dropped from, that dropped into the yellow, would they be able to get some of that target tutoring support?
Yeah, in fact, we are, we are expanding the program and because North Coast After-School is only three to five, we thought that might be a nice fit with the after-school math program. And we have the sixteen students that are mostly in the upper grade, so we'll have to consider whether we're going to expand that downward to the younger grades.
Okay, I think I just have one more question. Oh, yeah, the five-step process, did you, could you just maybe give an example how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. What happens is we come with our Mastery Connect data to the meeting, which is already entered in. At that point, our coaches do a great job of setting the agenda of, this is going to be the topic for today. We review the most recent data that we have and through that, put a look at how many students mastered it, where some of the strengths were, some of the obstacles, and then at that point, teachers will share some strategies. One of the charts actually showed a teacher comparison, there was a bar graph there. Occasionally, I notice one teacher had tremendous growth in one particular category. That's a great opportunity for that teacher to share some strategies that they did with the others. Other parts of that is also going over the opposite of where they felt students had some stumbling blocks.
Right, collaboration at all levels, I think that's the key.
And then what we, what we do is we eventually will set a goal and the coaches again will say, this objective or standard will come up again in a month and a half. Let's see how much growth or what we can assess at that point. And part of our closing the loop will now be that split step to see what type of progress we made.
And our coaches, those are from the Title I, those are our coaches, which, they've done real well, haven't they, Mr. Lysick? Yeah, so...
I think I pleaded with Mr. Bell to keep them in our building as long as possible.
Yeah, very good. All right, thank you, Mr. Paporis, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just a, again, a great presentation. And the reference packet is very helpful information also, so thanks for including that. I guess I'm going to take you, Principal Paporis, I'm going to take you in a slightly different direction. I'm a Euclid High School graduate and I believe you're a Euclid High School graduate. And I wonder if you could talk about, because I am somewhat familiar with the neighborhood that you grew up in, being that very neighborhood. I wonder if you could speak just kind of personally to how it feels to be a principle of a brand-new building in the neighborhood you grew up.
You know, you, you gave me some goosebumps right now just, just thinking about it. You know, it's, you know, I did some work for the levy in walking the neighborhood and going door to door. I mean, I remember, I have vivid memory of going to various homes and places in the neighborhood. I remember playing out on the playground and doing all those fun activities elementary school kids do. So, I mean, it's somewhat hard to put into words, but I, you know, I truly am honored to be able to give back to where I grew up. And I add, my parents are still right there and I sometimes get a quick dinner after.
Anything else, Mr. Smith?
No, again, I thought the materials were great, but, you know, I just, I mean, I... Again, I thought the materials were great, but, you know, I just, I mean, I've knocked on, I mean, my parents were teachers in this district. I know your, I believe your father was in education.
He was a guidance counselor, yes.
Yeah. And my grandparents, on my dad's side, taught in the Euclid school system. And I still remember going door-to-door, actually in that neighborhood, in your Chardon Hills neighborhood, and knocking on a gentleman's door and having him kind of say, well, hang on just a second. He ran back into the house, and I was just kind of standing there, a little unclear. And he came out with an old Euclid Central yearbook that had a photo of my grandfather that I had never seen before, because this was my grandfather as a much younger man.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I'm a little, I'm very familiar with the notion of occasional goosebumps and just, you know, the legacy of education service in this community, and I just, you know, I was very happy that you wound up at New Chardon Hills just to see, you know, what that could do for the community and the neighborhood.
Absolutely. I will add that when I was doing the work door-to-door, the neighborhood seemed a lot bigger when I was a child.
Oh, yeah, we should probably mention that Mr. Purors also wrestled for Euclid High School, and that, you know, with the rebuilding of our wrestling program, when things settle down at Chardon Hills, maybe we need to serve you into some other areas in our district, too.
Absolutely.
Anyone down here have questions?
I have a question about the academic small group adjustment chart. Can we see that again? Because it's kind of quickly flew by, and it was interesting to me.
Let me see, the quickest way to get there.
I think the flexible grouping idea is great, so that you can do enrichment intervention and...
Are you referring to this chart?
Yes, you said that the standards are on the left, and the hash marks are the number of times they were assessed, or is it the number of kids that were successful? I'm just curious as to how...
On the left side, that's actually teacher records, so each one kind of tallies a different system in doing it. But what they're doing is, they're actually keeping account of, you know, accuracy of what the students are doing in their particular small group.
That's kind of a hand count.
So is it out of 22 kids, that many kids were successful? Is that what that pretty much means?
That's the total, out of 24.
Okay.
Out of 24, so, as you see, they're checking off the number of students, which will then better able to formulate their small groups, and specifically group the kids to address any particular standard.
Yeah, I think that that's great. It really is a really good way to pinpoint exactly what kind of interventions a child needs and get right to it, so...
You know, this is also an example, and I probably should have mentioned it, you know, the teaching staff works hard. This truly is an example of it.
Yeah, it really is great. I'm really impressed by it, because that's what it's all about, understanding what you don't know, how else can you educate someone if you don't have a handle on that, so... And then the academic baseline, the next one? Okay, so the A, B, C, would you explain that?
This top column, this top one arrow represents the standard.
Okay.
This one, the next one below that is the actual correct response.
Okay.
And then these are just what the students actually responded to.
Okay.
The nice thing about Mastery Connect is it takes out all of this type, and we can do the same thing, put it in Mastery Connect in the future, and it may alleviate the need to try to total all the different numbers and see, you know, business teachers enter this by hand also.
Let me just help this for a little bit. I think in there is number cents, and I think it's mass, so what that's telling you, that's standard, that that's number cents, and then you have the right letter, so that's what the kids did, a number cents, and I can't make out all of them, but I do know the first one's number cents, so that's where that standard is, and they'll give you, they just do the abbreviation up at the top.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I had to ask, after the enrichment programs, the community connections, are there, is there a cost associated with any of those?
Uh...
The North Coast Tutoring, the Drama Smarts?
Mrs. Stern, is there Drama Smarts, there's a...
Drama Smarts, thanks to...
You need to come up and speak, so people can...
The other ones do not. Mrs. Stern can speak a little more to Drama Smarts.
With Drama Smarts, we were able to get a grant through the Artist in Residency Program.
Oh, great.
So we were able to offer that to the students for this first session, and hopefully that will be something that may be able to be continued in Chardon Hills.
And how many kids would participate in that?
They have capacity for 16 K-2, and 16, grades three through five.
And the North Coast Tutoring, is that, that's an actual program that comes to us?
Yes.
Those are not art employees, they are outside?
They hire themselves, but I do believe some Euclid teachers actually apply to also be tutors in that program.
And then how is that funded?
You know, I know that, I worked with Mr. Falido on it, so I'm...
Title money?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just add one thing? One of the things that you saw here was a lot of data and a lot of opportunities for us to be able to measure where our kids are. And one of the things that we are exploring now, and this is kind of a really good segue, is we're exploring as to how we're going to be, how we can put all of this data together so everybody can have the same data sets and be able to use this data to be able to gauge progress and where kids are. So right now, Mr. Barkowski, we're looking at, along with the internal system, to determine what is our capacity to be able to get this together. One of the things that is an issue that I looked at when I came is that we've got a lot of data, but it's all over place, and people have it, and what we have to be able to do is to make that very easy for people to be able to get to. It has to be teacher-friendly, it has to be parent-friendly, and you shouldn't have to go through a lot of different places to get it. Right now, our teachers and our principals and our tutors and our team have to go through a lot of steps to get this information. What we want to do is codify that, to make it smaller, simpler, and be able to allow people to get this information, and be able to get it and share it and do exactly what you saw today. So I'll be bringing to the board later on what our capacity is internally to do that, and then how we might want to do that, another way to be able to make that happen. Because when we do that, then we're going to be able to compare like that across the district. And that's where we need to get to, where we can actually look at this and be able to say, across the district, here's where we are, and we look at our progress, and we look at the challenges, we can look at how we can help one another. And what Chardon Hills is doing, and some of the other presentations that you saw, you see bits and pieces of some of that random data being put together, but our people have to work too hard. And so what we're going to do is make that a lot easier for us to be able to get to. So this is something through these presentations, hopefully you can see, we'll do that.
And it would help when students change schools, too, from one school to another in the district.
The mobility piece, you're going to make it easy, because you can take the same data set to a different building and be able to apply it, so yes, absolutely.
I'm really happy to see the character education component, because I know that some of the we compete with emphasize, well, we have character education, so we can say, we have character education, too. It's not a new concept, but it's marketed as such. And so it's almost like, you know, well, we don't, well, yes, we do. And so it was happy to see that.
Not only do we have it, our kids actually perform it, too.
Right.
They've done a great job.
Well, and I frequently get comments from some of the older generation that kids don't know those things, and they don't know the Pledge of Allegiance, and they never say the pledge in school anymore. And I'm like, I don't think that's true. But it's interesting to see that please and thank you and all those things that are important to be successful adults are being taught, and I don't want people to think that it's not. On the yellow, when you were talking about the benchmark data, and you said that approximately 50% would be expected, what can we do to change the number? What can we do to make it so that more of those yellows, since they're not getting the special interventions? I'm just concerned that, you know, the attention goes to the bottom, but we're not getting that middle group.
That's the specific question that we ask our teacher-based teams. When they're doing their intervention, part of their IE block, that is the specific, what are we doing for those kids, as well as what are we doing for the kids that are in the green to continue to grow those? You know, I mentioned a few times, we're very committed to the process of using the people that are closest to the children to make those, and we do have that hour built-in every morning for teachers to discuss that very question. Then after school, we'll expand our numbers well into the yellow.
Okay.
So that would be one area, and obviously, teachers are addressing that in the intervention piece, and there's, we can't neglect that that core instruction is very important for all children.
Right.
I mean, I've had to get to all the elementaries and sit in classrooms, I had an opportunity to see how that works in some flexible grouping that teachers were doing to really target kids that we didn't know. We had students based off of where they were academically, and each one of them almost had an individual education plan. And we were doing some individual works, and I, you know, would ask kids, tell me what you're doing and why, and they would tell me, I'm doing this because I didn't understand it the first time, and I need to master this. And I'd say, master? So what does that mean? That means I need to understand. I mean, they could actually articulate that back to me. So they are giving that language in the classroom, and I was really pleased to see how they're being able to do that. So I think that's one way that they're addressing your concern, because the idea is that we've had a problem in education. We look at the, you're right, we look at that highest domain, and we spend a lot of time in that lower tier, but we sometimes miss the meta. And I think individually, when you start examining where kids are, you start to keep that on track, and so Chardon Hills is doing it. I also saw the same thing when I was over at Auburn last week, too. So those teachers, and I like Mr. Purors's response, that the people who are closest to the battlefield are making those decisions, and they're making it based off of what they see, and they're individualizing the instruction, so...
I know that, you know, the whole thing on doing a lot of the testing to the standards, and that's what your teacher-based teams and so forth. So do they actually go back and reteach, like, let's say, the one where maybe like one teacher did really well, and she shared strategies, do they reteach that at that time, or do they wait for it to come back up again later in the year?
There are actual built-in parts of the schedule, are parts of the pacing guide that does allow for flexible weeks and catch-up, you know, that type of stuff. No, they specifically talk about, when this comes up again, how am I going to address this deficiency? That's specifically part of the conversation.
Good, good, because I know, I mean, not every teacher can be strong in every single component of everything, and I'm really pleased that, you know, we take the time to figure that out. And I know that, you know, we talked when you became, that you were a magnet school, and besides being just a school of choice, that you were allowed to put your thinking cap on, and you're probably still thinking about what you could do that's different at Chardon Hills to be magnet, although with second highest...
You know, we actually have a development team that is now going to start working on what specifically our vision is going to be for the magnet school to come back, hopefully towards the end of the year, to say, here's our vision, and maybe here's some ideas with the direction. In fact, we're meeting Wednesday to...
Okay.
We needed to get to know each other, I think, in that first half of the year to now explore where we're going.
Okay.
Mrs. Van Hoof, if I can, Mr. Steinmetz was the principal at Chardon Hills. I'd like to talk a little bit, too, because he's a very experienced administrator, and he might have some really great ideas, or at least could help guide your suggestion. Mr. Bell and I were at the Chardon Hills, where Mr. Bell was introduced to the community. One of the things that they had asked us when we left the Homeowners Association is that they'd like to get involved at some level with Chardon Hills. So what I'll do is, I'll put you, I'll get you that contact information at some point if you would like to contact them, and see. There's one gentleman in particular that had some really great ideas in creating community partnerships, and I see that you have a community-school connection piece to your presentation. I think that would fit in perfectly there.
Yeah, we are absolutely looking for as many ways as we can connect.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, I have one more question. Can you give me a mention?
With our reading, our literature circles that are conducted, the teacher will take the tutoring book that they're reading, and then when they get deeper into the higher levels of blooms, or they may take that more into an evaluating process of the book, as opposed to some of the other groups may just be doing understanding and applying some of what they're learning from the novel.
Okay, so you take the same book and you just...
Well, it could be different books. It could be different, yeah, it could be different books.
If they're tested on what they don't know, very seldom are they tested on what they do. And a lot of times when you get to that higher level of taxonomy, is really getting into the right, and you start to get into the depth of it, and what's going to be good, how is it going to be assessed? Because they're going to have to not only be able to get the right answer, they have to go into depth to explain why it was the right answer. So what they're doing in enrichment then really is paralleling exactly what kids are going to have to be able to do when they get into Common Core assessments, because there'll be far fewer, but much deeper. And so that's one way that you deal with the enrichment piece. You take the same novel, same information, but then start to test the actual answer, and people start to, and kids start to look at it and question, if it's right, why is it right? And it really gets to some really interesting conversation.
And I think, too, when I was teaching, the thing that I did, and I'm sure you probably still do the same kinds of things, is if it's a book about a certain tidged, is to the exploration of... That opportunity to explore further than when you start reading the book. I'm really excited about that. Common Core, I feel, is going to be the big challenge. So, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? There's nothing. Thank you.
The fourth thing that we're doing for communications is I have weekly principal and assistant principal meetings. And what those are doing is they're bridging the gap between the people in this building and our teachers in all the buildings. And so, we're working on two really neat things in those meetings. Professional development, because we are teaching, or I am helping, teach the skills of Facebook and social media. It's really neat, because five years ago, we were telling teachers, "No, no, you can't have a Facebook." But today, we're telling them, "Please get on Facebook. Please, please, please like us on Facebook." Because that's all we can do, is beg them to like us on Facebook. But it's not as unknown anymore. You know, the longer people have gotten adapted to it, the more helpful it is to help us get information out quickly. Facebook's a great tool for us to get information to parents that don't have a computer, because they can access it on their cellphones. So, that's part of my weekly principal meeting, just essentially teaching social media, continuing professional development, and continuing that connection. It's really important to have that FaceTime, I think, with all the different principals and assistant principals. Lastly, for communications, mission and vision statement. Our mission and vision statement was last written in 1992. So, it's time to rewrite it. We have a lot, a lot of really good ideas, and we have a pretty nice baseline for what we'd like to create. We just need to develop that committee rewrite, and hopefully, we would look at implementing a sustainable mission and vision aligned with our three goals, and hopefully, that would be accessible and ready to go by June of 2013. Next, we've got community. The goal, and the reason I chose community as a goal, is because we want to enhance the relationship with the community. We want to build these relationships. Super important. Mr. Bell is, has committed to 90-day commitment to the communities, and we're now calling those State of the Panther Addresses or Meetings, and that will happen every 90 days. And we're going to pick a different elementary school for this first year. So, the first one was at Bluestone. The second one, here's a little plug, February 6th, 7:00 PM at Arbor Elementary School, B R B Square. It'll be a great night where we will be able to explain to you the current condition, progress, challenge, and opportunities for our district. And then, 90 days after that, we will have the next meeting. Second thing is community outreach. Where we are in the past, where we've been in the past, was individual schools have had various activities, just been very scattered. There hasn't been like a very collective plan for that. So, right now, I'm working on scheduling monthly community interaction, whether it's with a senior center, whether it's with a nursing home, whether it's with a daycare. We're just trying to do things to help, or the Euclid Hunger Center, just things that the kids can get involved with on a building level, so this would encompass all eight buildings. And then, once a month, students from each building will be engaged with some sort of community service. Not every child in the building, obviously, can participate, but we're going to make our effort to help make that available to those who want to. Thirdly, a higher education summit. Where we were in the past, it was non-existent. Where we are right now, there's a big gap sometimes between what students learned in high school and what they need when they get to college. And sometimes, it's really hard, and I know that Core, Common Core will help that, but we're not there yet. So, what we're doing is, we are trying to develop a summit with local colleges, Kent State, Akron, John Carroll, just a lot of schools that are in the area, so that we can figure out what our students are lacking when they get to college. And then, we're going to also look at a business aspect of that, what people need when they get to the workforce. What are you missing? So, we're going to try to fill in those gaps with that. Fourthly, the Euclid Observer. Where we were, it was non-existent, but we had this on newspapers, so that didn't matter. Where we are, now, we will be having a two-page spread moving forward, that will be all about the Euclid City Schools. You know, we'll highlight everything that's going on in all of our different buildings, and athletics, and arts, and all that kind of good stuff. And where we're going, we're going to hopefully be able to expand the printing and share information past and future. And lastly, for community, we have the lobby update. Where we were, our lobby is getting a little bit outdated, but that's not why we need to do something. We need to, we are currently working on a plan to showcase student achievement. It's really important that when people walk in, they see what our students are doing. And right now, it's very, it's not reflective of student achievement, and it's not reflective of our community. So, our goal is to make it reflect student achievement, but also to make possibly an eco-friendly environment where people could come in and log in on an iPad, so that we're not wasting paper. We have a couple of different ideas. It's a direction that we're going, and it'll take a little bit of time to implement, but that is our fit community mission. Lastly, we have technology. And technology helps us be innovative, but it's also going to help us leverage our communication, and it's going to help us participate in the community a little bit better. The first thing is Facebook, which is really exciting. Facebook started with one district page. In November, when I got here, we had one page with 2,900 likes, okay? Which is huge. It's bigger than any other school in, actually, in the first rank. It's bigger than...
Oh, wow.
...Bargon. Where we are right now, we have 3,092 follower, or likes, on Facebook, and we are reaching an average of 500 people per post, which is more than we're reaching with our website. It's really interesting. But now, we've expanded Facebook, and now, we have eight pages. We have one for each school, and we have an additional athletics page, which helps us get information faster. As I shared with you, some of our parents don't have computers at home that have internet accessibility, and smartphones are a great source for that, for those parents who compensate with a smartphone. Facebook can send push notifications. I can get information to parents quickly using that, so that's fantastic. And where we're headed, we would like to gain substantial likes. I'm hoping a thousand likes for each page by June of 2013, so like us on Facebook. Second is a website redesign. Six years ago, we redid our district page, and it's functioning fine as of right now. However, things are hard to find. There are numerous ways to get to one thing, and it doesn't necessarily make sense. I don't know about you, but I found it really hard to find the lunch menu. I did, it really did. So, what we're doing now is, we are working on a site, on developing a whole new site that's user-friendly, and that helps two-way communication. We don't want it, we don't want a message board. We want to be able to get information out quickly, but also, but also to collect information as well. The third thing is a mobile app. Where we were, we had no mobile app. We had no reason to have a mobile app. Where we are, we actually have a mobile app. It was created last Friday. It is currently waiting on the Apple and Android marketplaces to push it through. It will be for free. It will be available to Apple and Android users, and it will be able to help you get to all sorts of different kinds of resources. You can even see board meetings on your cellphone. That will also help us with two-way communication. It will help us, or allow us to send push notifications, track analytics, and communicate much faster with parents. Lastly, for technology, board meeting production equipment. If anybody decided to watch the board meeting from last week, it was in black and white. Our system is 10 years old, and it is not functioning correctly anymore. We had to take one camera down today. There's only one camera to shoot. So, we are looking at a major overhaul of that system, something that can also be economically friendly and friendly to the environment. So, and we're seeking the most fiscally responsible way to update that, so we can bring board meetings into houses. Next, this is the data I have to back up a couple of things that we've done. Smartphone statistics. In May of 2011, American adults using smartphones were at 35%. February of 2012, American adults using smartphones were at 46%. There is no up-to-date information on this that is the most up-to-date. According to Pew Internet and American Life Project, which is a fantastic project, if you haven't read it, I have a copy of it in my office. African-Americans and Latinos have overall adoption rates that are comparable to the national average for all Americans. Smartphone penetration is 49 in each case, just higher than the national average of 46%. So, we're responding to the demographics of our community. Smartphones are really prevalent, especially among young people. So, it's really important to have a mobile application that can be downloaded from those markets. According to Cisco, by 2015, the number of mobile internet users around the globe will increase 56 fold to 70, or 788 million users. That's huge. I mean, so, this is, it's a great direction for us to go. It kind of puts us a little bit ahead of the curve. Facebook and senior citizens. This is crazy, and I don't know if you're going to believe me, but it's really true, that 49% of senior citizens are now using Facebook. So, when we thought we were using Facebook to only communicate with parents and stakeholders, we were wrong. Our senior citizens want to see it too. I would like to share with you a little bit of fiscal responsibility that's happening in my department. We had an opportunity with a publication, in the past, we've used Panther Proud. We've done Panther Proud. It comes out six times a year, and it cost the district $15,000. Presently, we are going to be utilizing the Euclid Observer 11 times a year, so people get it more often, and it's $4,400. That's a huge cost savings for us. Digital communications. In the past, we had a website. We have a district Facebook page, Twitter, and YouTube, and that cost us $480 a year. And what that cost is, it's just maintaining. It's like running it. But we've added website, Twitter, district Facebook page, building Facebook pages, mobile app, YouTube, and email communication, and it's only $770, which is $290 more. So, it's truly cost-effective. We're not trying to spend a lot of money to get a lot of results. It's more manpower. In summary, I just wanted to highlight that for communications, we're going to, we're going to calendar logo extra, which is internal communication, weekly principal meetings, mission and vision statement. In terms of community, it will be the State of the Panther meetings, community outreach, higher education summit, Euclid Observer, lobby update. And in terms of technology, we'll be working on Facebook, website redesign, mobile app, and production equipment. That concludes my presentation, and I am so honored to be able to speak in front of you. If you have any questions, I would...
First of all, everybody else, but I'm tired of just listening to all of it.
Because I told Audrey to not have any sugar on her fasted flakes because...
I love you. I don't know what you're listening to. But anyhow, no, I really, I really appreciate everything that you put together for us and shared, so I want to see if anybody has questions.
I have a couple here. Today was Facebook. I've been with the City of Euclid Schools Facebook page. I found Arbor's a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I had to find it on my own, but I think someone liked it from some of the site. But anyway, I went looking for the other schools over the weekend, and the high school one is really terrible. It's old, like really outdated.
Well, they show, all of them is different. There was, somebody had created one, so, there's one I had posted on the website. Here's another plug. On the website, there is a link under news, which our website, things are hard to find, but under news, there's a link, and there are eight different links to all the new pages. It will take you directly to there if you go there.
Okay, no, I'll do it that way. I'll look it up that way, because I was like doing the...
Yeah, it's, I'll pull it up. It actually is a lot more effective if you go...
Because Arbor was just so easy to find, and it was just like, okay, the rest of them weren't as easy.
Let me see if I can...
Now, on the sporting one, are these quick changes getting posted quickly with schedules?
They will, and especially once we implement the mobile app. We might have to develop our own app for athletics as well. We'll see how it works with just having the Euclid City Schools app, but...
Because I noticed last week, when the snow day happened, it came up on Facebook, some meet in the basketball game, or rescheduled for Thursday, which is wonderful, to have that information right in your hands. Because there is people out there who still think that when schools close, we still have events.
Right.
And they don't. But I thought it was great last week.
Oh, good, thank you. I can't get on, I'm sorry.
I did laugh, though, that I got, because I've liked the elementary majors, that I got a message from each school, you know, that the school was canceled. But that's okay. Getting it more than once is better than not getting it at all.
But I do know, like, the last, when Hurricane Sandy came through, and the first thing I saw, came Facebook said, "Euclid Schools will be closed the next day due to Hurricane Sandy." I had got more text messages and phone calls at home, asked me if that was for real. Because we'd never received information that way before, and they thought, they didn't know if someone had hacked into the system at that point in time or what. Because it was just, it was another hour before they came out. I sent Mr. Bell a text message, "Are we really closed?" And he said, "Yes." And I went to him and responded to everybody, "Yes, it's true."
Yes, we're closed.
Because, I mean, no one had, we'd never gotten a message that way before. So, I mean, people did notice it.
I thought it was great. Go ahead. Did you want to, oh. Did you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I noticed in the audience slide, you have Euclid residents, religious leaders, city leaders, and then also senior citizens. Mr. Bell and I went to the senior center, and Kathy Will really, Kathy Will is the director of senior programming in the City of Euclid, and she told us that the senior citizens absolutely loved our varsity corral group over there. We happened to bring them over the day that they were celebrating all the senior birthdays, so they got a special treat, you know, a happy birthday. So, Kathy pulled me aside a couple of days after and asked if this is something that we can continue to do. She says that the seniors really appreciate it. She would love to bring in other groups. So, you know, we had our varsity corral. We can bring in our orchestra group. We can bring in our jazz band, or our concert band. You know, rotate it. Even bring in the big show. Maybe bring in a couple of actors from the big show, do a scene for them, something like that. So, I know that you've done so much already, but at some point, maybe...
No, absolutely. And that's part of, that was hopefully part of my community outreach, that those groups are great groups to send to places like that, and sometimes, it's not, we don't, I don't want to take away from the academic day. I don't, that's never my intention. With all, the intention is to engage that, and so, maybe that would be an even better way of engaging community outreach, is by making those after-school groups go over there in a way that it's not interrupting the learning environment.
It's real hard, because they meet at lunchtime.
Yeah.
It is definitely a lunch, I'm in for lunch, and then a lot of them scatter after.
If it's once a month, or it's planned and advanced.
And you're switching the kids.
Absolutely. It's not the same over and over and over, right?
And that's part of the, yeah, and for those groups, that's the authentic educational piece, because if I'm in the, if I'm in the orchestra and I get a chance to play at lunchtime, that's what, authentically, what I'm supposed to be doing. If I'm in the corral, and I sing anyway, and I'm singing over there, and I'm actually doing what I'm supposed to do, so it really isn't infringing as much on the academic days we might think, because it's authentic in what they really would be doing. So, I think we can work through that. And it was really well-received when we were there. It was something that, you know, we really want to be intentional about and be able to get out to people, so.
Yes, he brought up a really good point. He said, you know, your tax dollars go to support these kids. This is the face of Euclid. These are the programs of Euclid.
Right.
And a lot of our senior citizens have, you know, their children have long since graduated from Euclid, or they may not have grandchildren or other relatives in our district. So, this is a really good way to show them some of the activities, extracurricular activities, and some of the programs that we have in Euclid, that this is what your tax dollars support.
That's fantastic.
Well, Audrey, regarding with the big show, we went over to senior center. The year that we did Beauty and the Beast, Mr. Farido, we had a busload of kids go down to the senior center at lunchtime, which happened to fall into Euclid Spring Break that week. But that was the rehearsal, the timing went. They loved it.
Oh, good.
It was a great day for everybody involved.
They're back.
But we did, Beauty and the Beast went down there.
We can absolutely arrange that. That's...
We got it.
It'll happen.
You heard it here.
When you talked about the seniors on Facebook, I'm one of them. People said, well, you know, "Why are you on Facebook?" When I first started, and the reason was, that was how I could keep up with my kids, because they're scattered around the world, and so, you know, I asked my daughter, "Well, where's your pictures from France?" And she goes, "Well, they're on the web, on Facebook." I said, "I'm not on Facebook. I want to see your pictures." "Well, then, go on Facebook, and you can see them." I mean, that was her reaction. And even other people that I've met on Facebook have said that their kids, that's how they keep in touch with them too, because when they're away at college or whatever. So, you know, we are friendly parents, so they do friend us back, and so, we can see them. But in there, they have rarely taken the opportunity to take our information, because I'll send it, I'll share it. And then, I see some of these people that have been out of school for a long time, sharing it with their pages, which means that they're spreading that word. And I laughed today, because one of the women was in California, but she had gotten my share and then set the share on, and that was to vote for Central for their contest with Channel 8. So, you know, she was encouraging, "Everybody go vote," and I'm like, "Yes." So, we might be getting some votes from farther away, but there's a lot of alumni who like to see what we're doing, and know that, you know, we still are producing excellent citizens for the community when they get done. So, I appreciate that. We're excited to have you, because you do seem to have the energy and the ideas and so forth with your communications background. And I put a plug in for communication majors, because they say that's one of the most in-demand majors right now. So, we need to spread that around for kids to know.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure, you can.
One thing that Mrs. Holsman mentioned was the State of the Panther, and that's at 7 o'clock for the public, but she also, one of the things that we're doing is, at 4 o'clock that same day, we'll be meeting with the staff to give them the same message. So, I wanted staff members who may be listening or watching, to be able to know that that message will go to the staff first at 4 o'clock, and then go to the community at 7:00. And then, the last thing was that she talked a little bit about the Higher Education Summit, and one of the things that I did when I was in Columbus, we were partnering with Ohio State. What it is, it's really about all of the schools that are in the area that our kids go to, and really trying to form a partnership with those schools. But not only is the school, the actual school important, also developing the working relationship with companies like Lincoln Electric, and Holes Master, and some of the other people in this community, because there are certain skill sets that our kids need to have in order to be able to do that. So, we're really trying to get to both sets of the horizon for them, so that they're able to do either or, and there are certain skill sets that they're going to have regardless of where they go. So, that's the purpose, and really trying to connect that, because, you know, the, what we found, what I found in previous areas in doing this, is that there's a perception that the curriculum isn't leading this, or we're not doing this, and really, that's not the case. It's really the fidelity of what we do. And so, to help with that fidelity, we want to get, we want to make that as authentic as possible, so when they get to that point, that they're able to be successful in the workplace. So, just wanted to kind of add that to those two components, because those are, those would be huge initiatives for us.
I could just make just a couple of comments. The State of the Panther postcard came last week.
Yeah.
So, it looked great. So, you know, got it out plenty of time, you know, excellent postcard, great way to advertise the PSC of the Panther, which will be on February 6th at Arbor. One more plug. Also, I noticed that Panther Nation comes out. So, my son gets this little sheet of paper that goes out to all the elementary and middle schools, and it's called Panther Nation. It gives a highlight or an update of all the upcoming events that are happening.
Hasn't had anything to do with that.
That's awesome. So, who's ever sending...
Who's ever doing it?
Panther Nation, yeah, I think that's great. And then, also, we ended up getting front-page coverage on the News Herald for our Martin Luther King Celebration, which hardly ever happens. Talk about having the Euclid Observer to get front-page on a Lake County paper, Eastern Cogah, Eastern Cogah County, or, yeah, district. Fabulous. That's, that's great. Good job there, too.
There's a really nice video clip as well.
Yeah. Isn't that great?
So, the UKYC was there too. Did you see it?
Yes, nice piece. Very, very nice. Yes.
And I have to say, that was probably one, you know, and Mrs. Tizano should certainly be congratulated.
Absolutely.
That was one of the best MLK celebrations I've attended. And I've attended a few. That was, it was fabulous. I left there with goosebumps and feeling really great about our district, and people, kids, parents, everybody that's with us.
We have a plan for next year, and maybe even better.
I'm looking forward to it.
Mrs. Wazey, I have to just make a comment about the photograph in News Herald. My son is a swimmer, and at this time, a lot of swimmers have very blonde hair, because they want to look as ugly as possible when they shave their head in a few weeks. And we get the News Herald, and my husband's looking at the News Herald, and he sees the Euclid High School band, and he goes, "Look, there's Joe." And the only way we knew is because he had this blonde, blonde hair, playing the trumpet.
That's amazing.
So, it was, it was so...
It's identifying. You're looking like, "Oh, yeah, that's Joe."
Yeah, well, he was playing the trumpet with the white hair, so we knew who it was, but it was, it was kind of nice to see the kids on the front pages.
Well, I think that we've already seen the benefit of having you here, because we have been on the TV state news a couple of times now, and that's way more than we've been before. And I think we've got a wonderful message. The staff works really hard. The kids are working hard. They're doing what they're supposed to, and we just need to keep getting that message out. So, thank you very much.
You have a really good story. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Can I?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, again, a very impressive plan in the respect that, a lot of layers of detail. The best thing about a modern communication plan is that it's got to be a multifaceted approach, and clearly, you've got, you know, you've got 14 different kind of action points on three different major strategies, which is clearly what's needed, especially when, you know, when the Euclid Sun Journal doesn't exist anymore. I mean, that's, the big challenge for the district is trying to, trying to make sure the community knows that we're trying to be open with them. And when there's not a paper there to do that, it's, you know, you've got to present yourself as open and forthcoming, and trying to provide as much information as possible. So, yeah, you know, the extensiveness of this is, again, just kind of further cements, I think, in a lot of our minds, you know, the level of expertise that you bring to this, and the great fit, as we have new buildings and new education, you know, that we need a modern communication plan to try to make sure the community's engaged, and so, you're to be applauded for that. The Cool School, Central Middle School poll currently on Fox 8, how long is that going to be up?
It's only up for a week, so you need to get your vote in before Friday. It goes down to the deadline. Friday, the Cool School will be announced on the morning show. I would just highly, highly recommend anybody log on. You can vote as many times as you want, but it's also something that we're going to ask a lot of our other schools to nominate themselves for. And the greatest thing is, you talk about all the things that your school's doing, and it's a great way to showcase what's happening in our schools. So, log onto fox8.com and click on Cool School. There will be a pop-up that will send a little voting tabulation thing your way, and you can click on Central Middle School.
Maybe that's, maybe that's something we can send out through the district. I'm sure you already have, through that extra...
Yes. We sent it out through Daily District News, which, it was in there this morning. We will need to remind everybody, students, staff, families, friends, nominate us.
Yeah, because we were lagging there, but I did notice the other two schools were on the west side, so we want to make sure that the east side comes through.
Oh, yeah. We can even ask our friends, our friends in the first ring to help us.
Absolutely. You can ask everybody, so, yeah.
Yeah.
See, when there's west side versus east side?
That's right.
Or, you know, or we can be friendly with Lakewood and say, "When you're up, we'll vote for you."
Oh, yeah. Just don't put us against each other.
Yeah, that's the only thing.
But, you know, at the same time, you know, updating the mission and vision statement, you know, is a good step, and the logo redesign, and the State of the Panther talks, you know, again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of proactive pieces, and there's got to be. I mean, we can't, you know, we can't have a reactive strategy to telling our story any longer, especially since the Sun Journal isn't here, and the Plane Dealer's not really giving us coverage, and the Plane Dealer's, you know, perhaps going to reduce their overall circulation in terms of, you know, the amount of days they're on the newsstand anyway. So, again, I guess I would be interested in, you know, and I'm perhaps not going to be on the board a year from now, but I would be interested. I mean, I feel like one of the things that I would like to know is what you kind of feel like the schedule of implementation on all of this is. Meaning, not that I'm trying to necessarily put pressure, because again, when you're trying to do 14 things that are sort of all brand new, I would say your implementation schedule needs to, you know, be fluid enough that if one of these things takes a little bit longer, that you don't abandon it, you know, because of a false deadline that's out in front of you. I would say you want to really try to get all 14 of these right.
Absolutely.
And if it takes a while, if it takes a while to get them moving, for whatever reason, I would say that's not a reason to abandon it. But at some point, you need to then kind of, after you feel like they're all up and they're all moving, and hopefully, there's complementary parts that are building the message and delivering a theme and, you know, and creating more openness with the community, at some point, you've got to kind of go back and kind of just evaluate, you know, where they are. But I guess, the reason why I bring this up is, I don't know if I want an evaluation piece a year from now. I want to know just kind of where we are in getting these all up. Because I would rather get all 14 parts, you know, working together kind of effectively before we then start evaluating best practices and.
Well, I think you have to audit it as you go. I think it's one of those things, like, we can't say, I can for sure tell you there will be a calendar in parents' hands in August. What I can't tell you is if our mission and visions, or if our Higher Education Summit will be completely, completely moving the way it needs to be in June, probably not. So, the calendar that I have given you is, it's a rough draft.
Let me help you just a little bit. I think one of the things that, and this is part of what the Board of Education needs to do for us. What you have to do for us is help us to establish priorities. So, in other words, when you look at this communication plan, then what you're going to have to do is help us to define what that looks like. Because we have a multitude of things, as you saw through the presentation, that we could be doing. And so, what we need help with is we need to sit down and talk about what the priorities are. And in that way, then what we can do is say, "Here's what we need to do," and we can get that real tight around exactly what you're talking about. But that's what the Board has to do for us. You have to look at it. The idea tonight was to give you an idea of all the things that are on the plate. And now, what you need to do for us then is to help shape the priorities by saying, "These things are the things that we think as a Board of Education are important for you to spend most of your time with, and we'd like to see these things done." And that's what we, that's what we need to do after you've got a chance to kind of let this sink in a little bit and examine that, and then we can talk about what the priorities are.
I say add it to the agenda of our work sessions.
That's all it is.
That's what I was going to say.
It's all it is.
The more we talk, the more I'm thinking, and we certainly can't discuss it all tonight.
Absolutely.
So, this would be the best.
And that's what the best with the plan was, to give you the snapshot. We just wanted to give you a taste and then give you an opportunity to look at that, and we can talk about what the priorities are. So, I appreciate your point, Mr. Smith, because it's exactly where we wanted to go.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Okay, we have just a few items of business.
Yeah, the first item I have is just the request for the approval of transportation. And we've got some adjustments that we're making in our Transportation Department. As you know, we lost our Transportation Director, retired in December. And so, what we propose to do is to make some adjustments that you have in front of you and to be able to continue to offer the best service. And so, what I'm asking is approval of the transportation adjustments, so that we can fill the position and be able to fulfill our transportation obligations.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Soudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Are there any questions or comments? Just to clarify for the public, we are not adding bus routes or anything. This is strictly an administrative change of positions and so forth.
It's actually a savings of about $14,000 with the move that we're going to make. We actually added a position, but it's less, financially less than what it was before.
And this was based on the recommendation from Mr. Higley?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Agan, if there's anything you want to add to that?
Just that it's a reduction of an administrator within the school district, which I think is important for people to know.
Okay. So, a reduction of an administrator and, but a routing specialist that will be helping to take.
A part-time routing specialist, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yes, the family liaison, could you describe the position and what their responsibilities are?
I'm going to let Mr. Wazey talk a little bit about that, since that's his. Wazey?
Yeah, thank you. The family liaison is, will be a part of our title services, our intervention services. In the December presentation, we presented to you how the restructuring, the title dollars allowed us to provide more services for less money. These four people are constituting what we can do with some of that less money. And in the savings that we have with the restructure, we're able to bring these family liaisons in. And essentially, they're working with students. We've built them into that IE period that the schools are referencing, where they will be able to see all students and support students and families with what we're calling wraparound services. So, things like behaviors that may be manifesting themselves in school, but may be a result of something that's happening outside of school, these individuals can really help support those students with the issues that they're having and support those families and supporting those as well. So, we were able to get pretty creative with their hours, so that they'll be working hours that will be able to support families as well as students.
What are their qualifications?
The certification, I'll leave to Dr. Selko.
The qualifications are three different areas in which we look at. There's an LSW, which is a licensed social worker. Then there's an LISW. And then we're also looking at social workers with master's degrees. So, we'll have three steps to the pay scale. And we will consider other, there's licensed professional clinical counselors, all PCCs, that we'll entertain. But we're looking for counselors that have, or social workers that have experience in the schools, because there are school social workers out there. So, that will be our focus, if we can find them.
Thank you.
And when would you be starting them working?
Our plan is to, the positions will be posted tomorrow, and we will work to get people in for interviewing next week or the week after. We will have a committee of principals, along with myself and Mr. Hanencheck, who has a background in social work. And then we will start them, hopefully, by the end of February. Is that all?
Can this be an ongoing position?
That's correct. One of the questions I asked was to make sure that we can sustain this position, because what we don't want to do is start this position now and end it in August, because we run out of funding, or June even. So, we are committed to making this position work and the sustainability of the program.
It's something we've needed for a long time.
Yes, I've been saying this for many years, going back to my principal days. So, I'm glad we finally brought it to fruition.
So, you have an opportunity to do a lot of, a lot of good work in the district. So, I appreciate Mr. Wazey's leadership in that area.
Because I know that, you know, some of the parents I've talked to is just, they don't know where to go to get the help. And so, this is going to be a way for them to find the answers.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Wazey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Home?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item that we have is a request to increase the staffing for, at our kindergarten level. Just to give you a little context, we now have 388 kindergartners as of today. And what we're proposing to do is to create another section to be able to get our numbers a little bit smaller and be able to allow those students to have the best opportunity to be successful. We've placed them at Bluestone based off of a number of factors, and I think I got that information out to everyone as far as why it's at Bluestone and getting them transportation and all that. But we really need to be able to allow our students to be successful. We are really increasing at the kindergarten level, and students are coming from new experiences in the district, new to the district. And Mrs. Allen and her staff have done a great job in trying to be as efficient about placement as we possibly can. And so, the idea here is to be able to alleviate some of that pressure that we have at the kindergarten level. And as you can see from the graph and the information that was sent out, it's our largest area of growth. And so, Mrs. Allen, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to what we're doing, but that's the rationale behind the proposal.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I just have one question about that. Are all the children?
Need you to just motion.
Oh, so.
Move by Mrs. Soudar, second. By Mrs. Wazey. Okay, now go ahead.
Are the children that will be attending that this particular kindergarten classroom already at Bluestone? Are they moving in from other schools in the district?
I'm going to let Mrs. Allen answer. I know most of it, but I want to make sure I give it accurate, so I know that she can give you the accurate information.
Thank you. Thirteen of the students who are presently at Bluestone have been assigned there with the anticipation that we would be adding. So, the last 13 kiddos who've entered in, essentially into the district, have been forced assigned to Bluestone, and we thought that we would add them there. So, they will not be children being moved out of existing student assignments out of the buildings, but in fact, will just be moved from within Bluestone. Okay. So, what does that do for any numbers anywhere else? Are they? As every child comes in, we're taking into account the class size of the building. That is what I consider their home school. And when we just can't put them there, we have forced added them over to Bluestone. The other forced add, because of the transportation routing, oftentimes become Chardon Hills. Chardon Hills is about its capacity. And when we force add a child outside of the residential zone, we do provide them with that transportation, because they're usually beyond the two mile marker. So, with that in mind, we had to be very creative about where we could place children, not only those kindergartners, but many times they come with siblings. And so, you also have to balance the fact that families need to be in one school in order to be active participants in the community. And so, we have to also look at where we can put their siblings. So, it has become a very intricate puzzle in the last 30 days or so. Nice problem to have, but 380-plus kindergartners was not on our radar screen.
No.
And we have never had more than 16 sections of kindergarten in my tenure here. And so, we are now adding that 16th unit, just to get to the 388. The last time we had 16 units of kindergarten, 16 sections of kindergarten, we only had 356 students. Now, part of that obviously is attributed to the fact that we only have four buildings, and we're able to concentrate our population a little bit better. But it's getting a little crowded where the little people hang out. So, I'm looking at 16 today. You know, cross my fingers that 16 will be sufficient. We may have this conversation again.
Well, that enrollment graph that we were provided, I was just going to comment. I noticed that we have an increase in the first, second, and, well, third grade is kind of stable, but fourth grade. I'm wondering if those aren't the siblings. I was just going to ask. I'm wondering if these aren't being manifested in the form of, you know, siblings accompanying those kindergartners in our district.
And quite a few of them are.
Yeah.
There's very few of them coming in as singletons.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's such a large increase.
Well, who knows? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, too, I'm surprised to see that our sixth and seventh grade has a large enrollment compared to the prior two years enrollment in sixth and seventh grade, which is always sort of like a sticking point in our district. We can get our students K through 5, and then oftentimes, parents get a little nervous going to the middle schools. And so, you know, a lot of those students who will transition into sixth and seventh grade, sometimes we lose them. So, it's nice to see that those enrollment numbers are up this year than compared to the prior two years.
Yes.
I'm even wondering if we should put together like a nice brochure to send out to our elementary school students, showing what activities, classes that our middle school can offer their children, so that we don't, we encourage them to come to our middle schools. Just thinking out loud, sorry. Sorry.
Well, we have, it looked like almost all across the board.
Yeah.
We're increasing in enrollment. So, when we do our planning for any future facilities, we have to make sure that we go back to the state and say that their numbers are wrong.
Yep.
And that we have more people than what they expected us to have, not less. And.
That's interesting.
They need to keep that, they need to take that into account.
I thought about that, yeah.
They gave us the original boundary lines that we used, and we found out that they weren't correct. So, we had anticipated that we would increase our enrollment. So, it's nice to see it happening, even though it does mean an additional teacher.
Which is, again, one of the reasons why I think this board wisely went with the elementary school section first. Because if enrollment does, I mean, as you continue to try to take advantage of that state money with a middle school building piece and a high school building piece, in whatever order, you know, this board and future boards decide to do it, you can always add an additional elementary school building at that point.
Wow, that's really thinking. Okay, you're right. Mr. Vasek, how does this affect our general fund?
This, this is essentially a teacher for half a year. The callback person, I would imagine, although I don't know, would be low on the salary schedule. I would say the cost would be about $30,000 specifically.
And we have $30,000 available to hire this person? You're going to do some extra pencil sharpening for this?
We can manage it. On the bright side, additional students mean additional state dollars also. So, we have been receiving some additional state dollars.
Just not quite enough for everything, but, okay. That's positive thinking. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
It's a Soudar.
Yes.
This is Van Home.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Wazey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
I want one more, then, right? We have to still do this last one, right?
Yes.
The actual hiring of the teachers.
Yes.
Yep, and I think the last thing on the agenda is the, asking for the approval to reactivate, and this is really dealing with the kindergarten situation that we just described. And we're asking to reactivate the teaching contract of Leo Kinsman for Bluestone Kindergarten.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Soudar, second. By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? It's nice to be able to call someone while we laid off. All of that. Call the roll, please.
Soudar?
Yes.
This is Van Home?
Yes.
This is DeAngelis?
Yes.
This is Wazey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Mr. Vasek, do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Bell, do you have anything for us?
Well, I think we've got everything covered, so thank you.
Okay, does the board have anything?
You know, I just might want to mention that this past Saturday, our swim team went to the Lake Erie League Championships in Warren Harding. Our girls team won the league championship.
Yes.
We've set, the girls were able to set, I think, four new league records, and I believe five pool records.